Yep.
Hey, everyone. Welcome you to the Board of Alderman Meeting for January fourteenth, twenty twenty-five. Please rise.
Not limited to, you know, it has all the education programs that Carolyn was sharing and other things, but Advocacy Day will be here before you know it. Chrissy's gonna send a link out.
Bobby.
You need to mute Bobby.
To for advocacy, I'm an advocate.
Thank you. All right. Let's start this again. Good evening. Would like to welcome you to the Ansonia Board of Alderman Meeting for January fourteenth, twenty twenty-five. Please rise.
Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Did Ethan lead us in that?
He sure did.
Okay. Thank you, Ethan.
You're welcome.
Say bye.
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 Fish, can I get a roll call?
Absolutely. Alderman King?
Eric.
Leia. Leia's from B.
Okay. Alderman Farrar?
Here.
Alderman Adamowski? Alderwoman Tar?
Yeah.
Alderman Cassetti?
Here.
Alderman Janetti?
Here.
Alderman Nut?
Here.
Alderman Hardy? Alderman Yaman?
Here.
Alderman Rivers?
Yeah.
Alderman Mamon?
Here.
President Schuer?
Here.
Alderman Lovinsky?
Here.
Alderman Duranty?
Here.
That's twelve present, two absent.
All right. I declare quorum.
Hey, Josh. So do we have someone? I know we had a someone to lead us in the pledge of allegiance, but it sounds like we kind of talked all over them. Is it possible we can? If that individual is still on, can we redo the pledge and let him or her lead us?
Or come back next month?
I was gonna invite him back because I never got notification that anyone was coming. So that's why I just ahead. Usually I get the name and I know and I look for him to be online and I didn't know anything. That's why I I just stood up and started talking. I'd rather just invite him back for a future one.
Well, could we redo? Could we redo tonight's and then have him or her do next next month as well?
Do you like the pledge that much?
I do.
We do it next month, too.
Is he still on?
I'm asking if we could do it. I'm asking if we could redo it tonight if this person is still on.
Is he still on?
Is he still on?
No, I don't see him.
For the third time.
And next month it is. Thanks.
Thanks, Tony. All right. Minutes for approval from the the two meetings, the organizational, followed by the full board meeting, both on December tenth.
Motion.
Second.
Motion approved by Rivers, second by Yaman. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? All right. Motion carries. Public session. Welcome to the public session. The public's opportunity to speak. Please be mindful of our time and the long agenda, but we're happy to hear from anybody from the public who would like to address the board. Please limit yourself to three minutes or less and please state your name and address for the public record should you choose to speak. Anyone from the public who wishes to speak tonight? All right. First hand I see is Nellie.
Yeah. Hi. Hi, everyone. I really don't. I'll be really brief and I don't have anything of great importance to say, but I wanted to wish all the Aldermen a very happy new year. And just say I'm really looking forward to whatever exciting things are in store for the place where I now live over for the coming year. And thank you for all your efforts to make it a better life for everyone. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for visiting. Anyone else from the public? And Anne Lynch, you're up.
Thank you. My name is Anne Lynch and I live at fifteen Birchwood Drive. Good evening, everyone. I would like to mention two things tonight. First, I would like to say how disappointed I am that this board voted last month to continue meeting virtually or at the discretion of the president of the Board of Aldermen to meet at City Hall. None of the surrounding towns are still meeting virtually. The meetings that I have listened to are very hard to follow along, whether there are background noises, who is on mute, and there are two people talking at the same time. It just makes it very difficult to follow what's going on in this town. It just seems very unorganized. The second thing that I am asking is for the Board of Aldermen to inform the community what the status is of the UI project at Nolan Field. I know it was briefly discussed at a past meeting, but I believe it was stated that the project would be completed in two weeks. Well, it is past two weeks. I just want to know if the fields will be playable for the high school, middle school, and the Babe Ruth baseball teams this spring. The baseball season begins mid-March, and as most of you know, it's the only big diamond we have in this town. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I'll just quickly address the online thing. That was, you know, like you said, voted as a choice. We probably will meet some in person as well. I know last month I had a hundred plus fever during the meeting, so we wouldn't have met at all if that was the case, but I do appreciate the sentiments on that. And on the other item, I will actually refer that to city staff if if there's an update on that, the UI project.
Yep, there is. We've been in communication with UI. They've indicated to us in writing that they will be done, should be done by the end of February. And we we told UI that we need the field for the first week of March. So they understand that. They've indicated they will be, it will be ready to go by then. And that's the, you know, that's the latest communication as of yesterday.
Thank you. Thank you for coming.
And I echo your sentiments, Josh. City Hall, we've had a number of people out sick and flu and cold season, so it helps to be online.
All right. Thank you. Next, Tim Holman waving his hand.
How you doing? I want to come talk about two things. One, about meeting in person. Maybe in the future I see that coming and I would like to see that done. But if you notice, New Haven, Yale New Haven has issued a warning. And now all of their staff are required to wear face masks because of the flu season and the viruses, the COVID that has reappeared. So I think what we're doing now is is better for us at this point. Also, the UI project, I talked to the guy that's handling that, and he has assured me that he will have those fields ready. He will restore Nolan Field back to the way it's supposed to be. So we're gonna have to go by what they say.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public who wishes to speak tonight? We have a couple pages here. Anyone else from the public? Third and final call. Anyone from the public who wishes to address the board tonight?
I would, please.
Uh, where did the voice come from?
Amy Bravo, one, ten Clifford Drive.
All right. Hit it, Amy.
Sorry, my camera just died on me here.
No worries.
Um, I just want to add on to what Anne Lynch was talking about. I appreciate the fact that Mr. Holman said that UI said that they will be restoring the fields to their condition. However, I would like the board to discuss what exactly that means. Will there be grass by mid-March for an outfield for Ansonia High School, Middle School, and Babe Ruth Baseball if this project is not ending until the end of February? That gives about two weeks for whatever part of center field is being worked on right now to be restored. Do we know what that means? What UI has said they're willing to do in order to restore the field so that it is playable safely for our athletes? Thank you.
Thank you.
Again, what they've indicated to us in writing is that the that the field will be put back to its original condition. In other words, they're gonna leave it as they found it. So they will make sure that we can use the field and it's in good working order. It's our job to stay on them and make sure that that happens. But that's what they have indicated via email to us.
Uh, Tim Holman, who wants to break the rule of speaking only one time in public session, but I think you're just responding to it. So you can go ahead.
Yeah, again, we I I've been in contact with the the person in charge of that. And unfortunately, UI had this project. There was nothing that we can do about it. The project had to be done and it's 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 being done. And we're gonna take them for their word that they're gonna restore the field, and that's the best we can do. If they say it's gonna be done, we have to take them for their word.
What's the contingent if they don't?
Then it would be too late, then we'd have to come up with some more ideas.
Yeah, I think we need ideas now. So Sheila, can you either punt that back or is John Marini on?
Yep, we've already, John and I have already reached out so for a backup solution.
Yeah, we need a contingent, and that includes them if if it's potentially renting another field somewhere else. These guys should be on the hook for it.
Yep, absolutely.
So we've also had conversations with Coach Brock today as well, and he's been in touch with with, you know, his baseball department. I think a backup location, right? If we could at least identify that as a possibility in case something goes wrong. And meanwhile, you know, Tim, I think we're gonna need to have status updates from UI on at least a biweekly basis as we move through the month and into early February to understand where they are and when they're gonna stop, because that restoration needs to be performed quickly thereafter, quickly after they've completed their activities. And, you know, I I do agree with Alderman Mamon. You need to have a backup location. Coach Brocket seemed to be have some, he had some level of comfort in terms of what portions of the field were being worked on, what portions were being affected, and our ability to pivot quickly. But to the extent we could work with the Board of Ed to get a backup location in place, just in case it prevents us, you know, from having to run around and do those that negotiating with neighboring communities at the last minute.
Thank you. Thank you both, all of you for the updates. And so I would say if things are not trending in the right direction this time next month, we should probably, or earlier, we might have to jump into action. All right. Anyone else in the public who wishes to speak tonight?
Yeah, um, I don't know how to put it in the chat, but my name is Patrick Palmer. I live at five Schmidt, Harrison Derby. The reason I'm on is I'm actually the high school baseball coach. So just reiterating what was said from Anne and Amy, just I understand that UI is getting the work done and the hope is the field's ready March first. Just so we have it on record, tryouts should be up at Nolan March twenty-second. That's the first day we can get out there with the CIAC. Pitchers, catchers week begins the week before. I'm expecting a larger turnout this year of players. So I'm hoping, I'm hopeful that UI will be able to get the project done. But just for my own, I could start kind of figuring things out. Is there, I know we talked about a backup plan. Are there any ideas where that would be? Would it be in town or is that where we would have to look outside?
Sure. Happy to talk to you about that, Coach, offline if you'd like.
Okay.
But I would say, Coach, you have the commitment from the board to at least ensure you will have space, whether it's here or somewhere else, you will have the space needed for what you're doing.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public who wishes to to address the board tonight? Anyone else? Third and final call for public session. Seeing none, we'll close the public session, move on to public official session. That's you, Mayor Cassetti.
Good evening, President Schuer. Members of the Board of Aldermen, residents of the great city of Ansonia. This month, we are continuing to work on the budget process. Our departments are sharpening their pencils and working with Finance and Kurt Miller, our Budget Director, to ensure that city services are not compromised and to ensure that we have fair and balanced budget as we have had in the last eleven years. I intend to have a draft of my budget ready towards the end of this month or early February, despite having to wait for the state to send us definitive numbers. Of course, we never know what the state has in store for us. We won't know early on whether or not we will receive our full and fair funding and whether we will have numbers in a timely fashion. If my memory serves me, we will have more unfunded mandates and lower ECS numbers, which will place more of a burden on our city and many others. However, we will control what we can control, and that is our budget. We will work hard to produce a balanced budget on the local level for our residents. Our residents expect that on the municipal side, we are holding things in check despite the pressures and mandates from the state. I know it's been said before, but I will repeat that we have a great team and a great Board of Aldermen. There has been lots of hours and hard work put into securing our grants so that we can move the city forward and with new projects. And they have all been due to the diligent efforts of municipal staff and this board. Soon, we will see a lot of activity with our great grant project. All the money we secure will begin to pay off. SHW Building Twelve is set to go out to bid this week. Olson Drive is now slated for field construction after months of assessment and remediation as the contaminants were widespread. We are hopeful that the NV cog region in the state gives us a green light for our road projects soon. A new access road and site pads are in the works for SHW, which will spur a fuel cell project and a far bigger future project on the Ansonia Copper and Brass site. Our East Main Street carport project is nearly complete, which will help offset energy costs and improve our efficiency. You will hear more about all these projects and our referendum projects from John and Sheila. A couple of quick reminders. This past Friday was the first night of adult women's boxing. We had a good showing and everyone enjoyed the lesson. I encourage more women to participate in this program, and we hope to see you at the armory from five PM to six thirty PM every Friday. It's a great cardio workout, and it's not too late to sign up. Please stay healthy and safe during this cold and flu season. Try to stay warm as well. Thank you all, and God bless you all.
Thank you, Mayor. Next up, we'll hear from Corporation Council, John Marini.
All right, Mr. President, members of the board. Let's start by talking about some sports at the outset. We just talked about the UI project in Nolan. Want to reiterate, we're gonna be looking for updates as we move through this month. That way we can anticipate what's happening at that location and what the need might be to relocate the activities in March if if that comes down to that. And Josh, we will update you directly as President of the Board of Aldermen, that way you wait, that way you have an understanding of what's going on. And if there's a need to meet on an emergent basis within this month or early next month to to make some decision relative to a relocation, you'll know. Two other issues that we're looking at for sports as well. Number one, we understand that the tennis courts right now, we don't have accepted acceptable tennis courts for our girls tennis team. Right now, what we're doing is looking at the possibility of doing a temporary location at with Emmett O'Brien. So we have, we're gonna have more details on that shortly. But in a nutshell, the concept was to make some improvements, help Emmett make some temporary improvements to their facilities that are right now not ready to go in return for the ability to utilize that resource over the next year. That way, the that while our own tennis court improvements are being worked on as part of our field program, we don't have to make the girls wait another year. So that is in the works right now, as is a careful eye at the lower field of Colony. And as you know, the upper field in Colony should be ready to go this spring for sports, soccer specifically. But we're taking a look at the lower field still being susceptible to flooding. Right now, it seems to be in bad condition. We're trying to get a read on exactly how this is gonna carry over into the season and the spring and make a determination as to whether or not we're going to need another temporary location as we wait for the rest of the field projects to be worked on. So while we have some very positive things coming up in terms of work on fields, as you know, we do have these issues, right? At least three of them right now that we need to keep a careful eye on to make sure that we're not disrupting our our sports activities. Speaking about that light at the end of the tunnel, on the agenda tonight, you do have the reappointment of the School Building Committee. That is, of course, vital to our large school building project, which is, of course, the middle school, but it's also gonna be important in terms of our our no less significant overall field project. As we discussed at a subcommittee meeting last month, there is going to be a portion of the field project that relates to school facilities utilized by our schools, for example, Nolan Field, that could be eligible for significant state reimbursement. And the idea of having our Nolan Field project be eligible for up to eighty percent reimbursement, that's a big game changer in terms of getting not only the project done, but getting much more value, much more value for the same money. And make no mistake, it is the intention of the city and our boards and commissions to make sure that any value, extra value realized by reimbursement goes back into the fields to do even more. Exactly how this irons out, we're looking at a meeting with the field subcommittee of the School Building Commission. And of course, our Board of Aldermen Subcommittee on Fields in order to start to square that away. And right now, the tentative thought is to kind of break this into pieces so we could deal with the city fields that are not utilized by Board of Ed right up front. We can get those out to bid and under construction. While meanwhile, we allow, say, Nolan Field to run through the School Building Committee, allowing it to be eligible for reimbursement, because if we move too quickly without it going through the School Building Committee, without making sure that it's a true school building project, we will lose reimbursability status, and that could be losing eighty percent of a value of eighty percent of the project that we could return to the city for more work. But it does begin tonight with the appointment of that of that full School Building Commission. And then we're gonna be looking for that group to start meeting on the larger project, the school project, middle school project, and of course, breaking into a smaller group to work with this board on the fields. That's a lot to throw out there. So at the end, please, any questions, we could talk about what the intention is. I want to let you know that you have your your union draft, union proposal relative to those union supervisors in City Hall before you tonight. We're gonna talk about that in executive session. And I want to thank our negotiating team and also the UPSU negotiating team and our unit members for working with the city to come together on what we believe are mutually agreeable terms. So we'll talk about that later tonight. Of course, last month, you ratified the Nature Center Rangers contract. So moving forward with these union contracts, this represents the last contract until the clerical is up later next, later this year, twenty twenty-five. Library, you see an update on our library fundraiser. A little under three thousand dollars was raised from our toy show. That's those funds are gonna be headed to our library commission for programming. Specifically, we're looking to have those funds programmed for expenses relating to new children's books and possibly teen room books. But that's going to be, that that decision's gonna be made by our library commission. We're also working with the library commission to start plans for the work on the Winnebago. Plan is, of course, to renovate the Winnebago donated by Griffin into a bookmobile, and it does start with obtaining a consultation services. So we're looking for a firm to give consultation to the library commission so we can understand exactly what essentially the specifications would be of this project, and then we can go to bid and find funding sources. Finally, we're looking for dates. We, as a follow-up, we need an ordinance committee meeting. We need to review the draft ordinances that I proposed at our last board, full Board of Alderman meeting. And with an eye towards scheduling the public hearing on those draft proposals, those draft regulations. And also, we're looking for a date that staff can meet with our engineers and the public to talk about the Ansonia Opera House and the preliminary plans for the renovation of the Opera House. We do have some exciting sketches and designs to show you. We've been awarded state funding with a promise of much more. Again, this is a very exciting project, and but we want to begin it with a kickoff that will involve our engineers presenting to the public to show you their designs and potential for the site. Any questions on any of that right now?
Any questions from the Aldermen Corporation Council? All right. You get off easy. Next up, Economic Development Director.
Thank you, President Schuer, members of the Board of Aldermen. Some updates on our projects and our referendum projects as well with respect to the Opera House. As John said, we're just now finalizing a financial assistance agreement. That money is two hundred thousand dollars, but now we've asked for some flexibility so it can be used for environmental assessment as well as marketing and planning studies on how to move this project into the redevelopment phase. So that's an important dollar amount, even though it's not a high number. For SHW, yes, bid specs are gonna come out this week for building number, for the demolition of building number twelve. And in addition to that, we're going to be requiring some remediation of the area where the fuel cell pad is going to go and a portion of where the access road will be. So they'll be demolishing and also remediating a portion of the site. And that's what we'll be looking for with a formal bid. Engineers are, we had a bid process and our engineers are designing the bridge replacement for the Riverside Riverside Drive Bridge into the Ansonia Copper and Brass site. We are bidding out at the end of this month, if not the first week of February, the Olson Drive construction of the cap and the field. So we need a, we need to bid that portion of the next phase of this project out, and we will get a contractor to begin laying the foundation for the field. So that's, it's coming along. As the mayor said, there was widespread contamination and a lot of requirements per the grant that we secured. And I have a resolution that I can read into the record later on for Olson Drive. The animal shelter bids are due back on January twenty-first. We extended that a couple of weeks because of the because of the response, we've gotten a number of firms that wanted to come in and do a walkthrough and also because of the holiday season. So January twenty-first, hopefully, we're gonna get, looks like we have at least seven or eight that are interested right now, and hopefully, we'll get as many submitting bids so they're competitive. Gaddis and Park Equipment is is in, and they are waiting to deconstruct the old equipment, and we'll begin with the new construction in the springtime. I'm going to preempt Mr. Rivers and Mr. Yaman and say that I have contacted on the mayor's behalf, the state DOT to to express our strong opinion about leaving half of the road in poor condition and paving only the section, the upper section. So it's our, it's our job to put their feet to the fire and come back in the spring to finish that road off. And also, we are gonna be submitting for a pre-app for sidewalk improvements as well. Think for now that is it. I will entertain any questions if you have them.
Thank you, Sheila.
You're welcome. You're welcome.
Any questions from the Alderman?
Mister President, I have a comment and a question.
Yep, hit it Bob.
Uh Sheila, this Olson Drive is kind of rubbing me wrong. We sold the property and I was all in favor of that.
Yep.
For no dollar amount, we did not need more open space, more parks, more whatever to cut and maintain. I understand that. Then now that it's sold, we got the grant for the cleanup of the pro- not we, you did. Got the grant for the cleanup of the property. Most of the material that they dug up is still on site. And now they're going to go to bid for laying the foundation for the field. I just don't understand. Are we going to build the whole thing and hand the guy the key when it when we're done with it?
No, and and Bob, that's a good point. I mean, the grant will only allow you to do. Things related to the remediation of the of the property. And they will allow us to place the, to place the cap down. To to construct certain aspects of it and then and then yes, that will be turned over to the uh to the developer. He did pay five hundred and ten thousand dollars for the property. Um and it turned out that, you know, there was, there was more contamination than originally thought, but. You're right, um you will see, you will see the developer begin the south portion and then the north, north portion. Um we're all looking forward to him getting out there, but we're going to uh, we're going to expend our grant funds. And do what we said we would do with them and make sure that um we can take them as far as we can and then we'll turn it over.
I understood the the cleaning of the soil to speed the project up. I I, you know, I almost didn't have a problem with that, even though. That property was in his possession and I think he should have looked into that further before he bought it. Done some test drilling or whatever he needed to do.
Buyer beware.
Ridiculous.
Yeah, we're we'll um, we'll be done with the remediation efforts and you will see the uh you will see the owner. And his construction team out there, so don't, don't give up hope. You know, he bought it as is, but but um we thought that by securing funding for cleanup would would um would help out.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh Dan, did you, do you want to speak?
Uh yes, uh Sheila regarding uh Gaddison Park Playground. Um then that's great news. Thank you. Um people are going to be excited about that. Do we have a company that's putting that in or is that going to be done through Public Works or what's the schedule like?
Yep, that's a good question. We're going to bid, we're going to bid out for the uh installation. I think that the company that created some of the pieces has, has some part in the con- in the uh installation. But um I believe we're going out to bid for a contractor for the, for um most of it.
Because then, of course, I mean, there's other landscaping that's going to be done, but around the playground, that's going to be finished. So there'll probably be different companies, but.
Yeah, absolutely.
Either way, that's exciting uh news. That's great for the neighborhood. They're going to love it. Thank you.
Yep, thanks.
Thanks, Dan. Um any other questions for Sheila tonight? All right, I will move on to um Ansonia Police Chief Wayne Williams.
Good morning or good afternoon, good evening. I'm sorry, it's been a really long day so far. Um so I'll give you a a quick update on our uh personnel, which is starting to trend in the right direction. Um we currently have six officers, I'm sorry, five officers in the uh training academies. Uh they're scattered about the state right now. Um we have two officers that are currently in field training. We still have four open police officer positions. Um as I have mentioned in the past, there were some changes to the SEAMERS Pension Plan for um. Anybody in that plan, which included all of the police officers in this department. Um and those changes take effect July one. There is the possibility we are going to lose some staff. I know one is a definite. Um prior to the changes in that pension plan, so I will keep you up to date on personnel issues. We also have an officer that's recovering from uh an injury, an on duty injury. He's been out long term. Uh we have an officer and a dispatcher that are also on extended leave. Uh we just started for officers, we just started a new application phase. Um next academy is not for a couple of months, so we have some time to uh to try and fill those positions. Um Sergeant Alex Barrera uh was promoted at the last meeting to the rank of lieutenant. Pending the negotiation of a contract with the city, we hope to have that contract in front of uh the Board of Aldermen uh at the next meeting. Uh we're still working on our accreditation. Uh I know I mentioned every month, tier one is done. We are currently uh working on tier two. We are currently switching over to new firearms for the department. Uh this was purchased as part of the referendum. Uh the weapons are all in and we actually started training the first group of officers this week. Unfortunately, uh due to the amount of time we need on the range, uh we're having to go outside the town to use uh of other ranges. So the this week we're conducting the multi-day training at the New Haven Police Department, who's gracious enough to let us use their range. Um we're trying to work out arrangements with other uh departments that may have ranges so that we can finish this uh training. We are also working on a replacement of our canine unit. Uh as you know, uh last year tragically, K nine Kane passed away. So we're working on a vendor for the purchase of a new dog and training. Uh the new canine vehicle will be arriving this month. A lot of those funds came from the referendum, but we're also working on. Uh with some companies on donations for the cost of the dog and the training. Uh we're taking applications from our officers now. Uh the selection will take place this month. Following the uh contractual obligations and policies of the department. A reminder to the public that winter parking rules are in full force. Uh we've issued several hundred parking tickets so far since the beginning of December. Uh most people are now in compliance uh and we address complaints uh received from the public and from several members of this board. As they come in, but uh it looks like we're getting compliance from the majority of people now. Um and I'll take any questions that you may have.
Any questions for the chief from the Alderman?
Yes, Chief. A couple of questions. Uh is the gate at um Nolan Field being left open uh because of the uh construction up there?
So we have been locking it. I know there were some issues with them having to work up there late, so that's why you're probably seeing it. Open later at night. Um but I tried to at least get our midnight crew to uh to make sure that it's locked up. We usually lock it at sunset, but as you know, they've been working into the night.
Yeah.
Up there. So we're trying to be a little bit hel- helping them out as well, because. The uh sometimes they have to bring in trucks and if you, it's hard to make that swing up at the top of lavender. And then to make another swing when they get to the ends, it's easier to shoot right up through the, from the uh field parking lot. So now we're aware that uh it's been left open. Um but it's a matter of trying to get the midnight guys up there to uh close it once that crew is uh is already out of there. So that's the best answer I have for you on that.
Okay, and I just want to um uh thank you for um keeping us uh um informed about the things that's happening in uh Pippa Ward. Thanks, Chief.
No, no problem.
Thanks, Chicago. Uh Joe Cosetti?
Yes, hi Chief.
Hi Joe, how are you sir?
Not bad. Yourself?
Doing very good. Thank you.
I was wondering, is there any way we could address the excessive noise vehicles that uh? I imagine the officers are worried about their safety with tinted windows. And uh why don't we have our own pistol range with that enormous building that we have? That there's no pistol range for Ansonia Police Department?
Um so yes, on the, first I'll I'll talk about the cars, uh the noisy cars and the tinted windows are something that we do address. Uh on a, on basis when they're not responding to calls, as I've talked about for probably the last year. Um we're usually running at minimum staffing. Um so it it, they got to take a priority, calls have to take a priority to motor vehicle.
I understand.
Yep, and second, uh the range, um I will tell you, I know uh it was part of the original project. Um the cost was uh was quite high for a range inside this building. So uh that's might be something that's addressed in the future, but uh I know that that was not part of the uh Police Department um building at the end.
That's too bad, Chief. I remember a time when the officers would uh pitch in and do the work themselves to get this type of thing up and running. Yeah, I know, of course, these are different times, I understand, but uh. I I was just wondering if it was still in the fire or not.
It is a um, so obviously the regulations now that go with uh. With pistol ranges are a lot higher than they used to be. Um my understanding, it was about a million dollars for the range here. Um so. If anybody happens to have an extra million dollars, um willing to take the donation.
Let's get a grant. Thank you, Chief.
All right, you're welcome, sir.
Chief is my competition with grants, right? He's doing, doing pretty good in that category himself.
No, I'm not that good. I get a couple here and there.
Yeah, right. Don't, don't undersell yourself, Chief.
I see a superintendent smiling down there, so maybe he's got a million for him.
Well, I don't, I don't, I don't have a million dollars, but uh what about the uh shooting range at the armory? Is that still feasible or is that contaminated?
Yeah, I don't think that that was, uh I think that was contaminated.
Okay.
Yeah, twenty five years ago, I I'd be honest with you, I really don't know. I I don't have the answer to that. That might be something that uh. The Superintendent of Public Works can check into for me.
I can check into that for you, but I don't have a million dollars.
Yeah, I just don't know. Uh I I honestly don't know what it would take. My understanding initially, and we were talking about this before the Police Department back in the day. Was that it was going to be so excessive an amount of money to get that up to code that uh would be easier to build your own range.
Yeah, no problem. Thank you.
Any other questions for the chief from the Alderman tonight?
There's a range at the Armory?
Yes, there is.
Under the floor, guys, there's a rain. It's heavily, heavily contaminated to the, to the point where you're not even supposed to open that door, much less be in there. So that that is, that is a no-go zone. Do not go there.
Yeah, that's why.
Do we do tours of it, John?
No, no, actually, it's it's dangerous enough where we we can't, you can't go in there.
Not even during Halloween?
So but exactly, in fact, our once, you remember our, remember our ghost uh? Our ghost event, they wanted to go.
Now you tell me it's contaminated.
Quiet.
No, they were not allowed to go in that room.
All right.
Tony, it's it's two lefts and a right from that terrific VHS collection.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we need to like a historian, because that's. That's, that sounds like a pretty interesting story, at least. I was unaware that there was a range.
Hand is up.
Yeah, I think, I think that's an old hand, but Dan, do you want on this topic or is that regarding Gaddison?
I don't know if he's with us.
Any other questions for the chief?
Nope. That was probably still up from before.
Okay.
But actually, in regard to the Byron Range, we're lucky enough to have our own gun club, one of the oldest in the country, right here in town. In the meantime, can't leave, make arrangements with them. Maybe add on to the club, maybe have a section for our officers to use continuously. You know, something that's already there that wouldn't cost us a lot.
So I will tell you um that they are very gracious with us. Obviously, they don't have a uh, they they don't have to give us any time up there, but we do most of our qualifying up there. But uh last I checked, I think they have over a thousand members. Um so they have to, we have to kind of do the dance where we get some time there when they don't, when they have availability. So when we uh, when we need qualifications for our regular yearly qualms, uh we do do those up there. We also have to do our night shoot, uh which is a a mandatory qual. And uh this, I mean, this goes back several years. There is a court agreement up there between the range and the city. About how many nights that the police can use up there. Uh there was quite a bunch of litigation that took place. Um when it came to the range. Um so they are, they're gracious enough to give us the time.
They're also limited.
Yeah, then we have.
They were shut down for operating hours and so forth, so.
But switching over. Switching over to a new firearm um takes up more than just a couple of hours, so it's a couple of days uh of training. Um so that's why we had to to go elsewhere. Um but like I said, New Haven has been awesome with us. Uh they they gave us their ten lane range. Um so we've been able to use that this week. Uh in negotiations with a couple of the departments outside our region who have also uh trying to make some room for us, so. Uh by the end of this week, we'll have about half the department uh done. That'd be a, that'll be a good dent into the uh, into the new quals.
Thank you. All right.
Hey, 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 Josh, before you move on, I know Tim doesn't usually speak, but Tim, can I just recognize you and your team for the? Little bit of snow and ice that we had the other day. You guys moved out pretty quickly. Got stuff cleaned up, you know, made the drive home a much more bearable than Route Eight was. You know, I got off the exit and Sonya was. Nice, clean. I was able to get up Hill Street like I was. Proceeded to clean off my driveway and when the, when the plow driver came by, angled the plow away from my driveway to not re, you know, put some of the slush back on. And proceeded on his way, gave him a friendly wave, so just cheers to you and your guys for doing a good job.
Appreciate it, appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief, for coming once again. Um we'll move on uh to our final guest, um Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Joseph Tabaco. Welcome.
Good evening, good evening, President Schuer and members of the Board of Aldermen. Uh it's been a while since we talked. It felt, at least it feels like it. So one thing I want to start off with is a absolute positive. On December fifteenth. Uh we won our twenty second state championship in football. I can't say thank you enough to our community. Um at that uh final game at Rensler Field, we had about a thousand people from Ansonia. And I think Bloomfield had maybe fifteen people on their side. So you know what? Ansonia. Uh they travel, they support, and it was, it was wonderful to see the community rally behind um our students. It was a range of emotions in December. Two days later, on the seventeenth, I had a teacher while in service to us pass away. Uh his name is Ruben Little. He was a uh business teacher at Ansonia Middle School. Wonderful, wonderful, wonderful gentleman. He will be uh missed deeply. Um I kind of recruited him and brought him to district and um. He he will be missed and it'll be very hard to replace. Um moving all along with uh news of that nature, um. Power School, which is a student data information system, they had a breach across uh, I know in Connecticut, many districts had their data. Um if not stolen or extracted, uh Ansonia was left untouched, but I, that doesn't mean anything at this juncture. Because I can find out a couple of days later that something did occur. So we have changed all passwords and we've made things um. At least we tried everything we can do to make it more difficult on our end, but data has been uh, that system has been compromised. In the last bit of wonderful upsetting news, we actually got from the state of Connecticut. We have something called excess cost funding. Excess cost money is for special education students. When it's like four and a half times our per pupil expenditure, we were slated to get seventy four percent reimbursement for those students. To be a little conservative, I budgeted at seventy percent, anticipating seventy four. On January seventh, we were notified that we were getting sixty percent, ten percent less than we were. I mean, that I had budgeted fourteen percent less than we had been promised. Um many districts across the state are dealing with that same uh issue. There's pending legislation right now in this session to make sure that s- special ed funding is funded at the fullest. Especially from the state. Otherwise, it puts a further burden on every municipality across the state. So that was absolutely terrible news um for us, but I always like to leave you on a positive. All our new sports teams are starting off on a very happy and good note. The twenty twenty five um session of our school year is starting positive. Kids have happy faces. Kids are in school and we have the greatest support from our Board of Ed and our Board of Aldermen, and that's all we can ask for as we move forward in twenty twenty five. I'm here to answer any questions that you might have and anything I can do to help.
Thank you. Uh first question, Joe Cosetti?
Hello, Superintendent. How are you tonight?
Very well, sir, Alderman Cosetti.
Very good. Superintendent, uh just wanted to mention that uh on the twenty first. Believe it is, I have to check my calendar. Uh we have the uh sports banquet at the Holy Rosary Church. It's going to involve uh the football team and anybody else who wants to come, basketball, baseball, anybody who wants to come.
That's, that's great to hear, and we will have our, our football banquet soon enough in March as well. That's, that's great to hear, and we will have our, our football banquet soon enough in March as well.
Okay.
And, and the thankfulness is to all the donors that help support us and pay for the banquet and rings for the, for the students. It's amazing what the community has done for uh, for our, our young men, for us, once again.
Thank you, Joe.
Absolutely.
Any other?
Joe, it's tough. Yeah, I got, I got a question. So from a finance perspective, Joe, that shortage that you were talking about, I assume that's baked into your current year budget? Is that fair?
Yes, I mean, so that's gonna impact this year's budget. Um, I, I look at it right now, I'm working, we have a new finance director. It potentially, that ten percent can anywhere be from three hundred to five hundred thousand dollar swing for us.
Yeah, that's, I was looking for the dollar amount, and I know you mentioned the percentage. I was kind of curious on the, the dollar impact on that. So I'd be, I'd be kind of curious to see how that, how that closes out, so.
It, it does. It depends on our final uh, students, outplace students, because those are the ones that are the highest cost students. Those are the ones that are four and a half times. But I, I could tell you roughly, it's, it's, I like to be conservative. I would say it's at least gonna be a half million dollar swing uh, that we're gonna have to magically come up with. Um, I, I, I might have to see if there's anything left in that non-lapsing account to maybe not hit anybody hard, but uh, and we've been on a budget freeze since January first. So um, freezing the budget and trying to make up for um, the lack of support at the state level.
You know, a, a few points, I think, is one thing, but you, you're talking large swings that, you know, got cut out of that, especially when it's budgeted. Is there, is, was there any? I don't wanna say explanation. Was there any excuse offered by the state for why that occurred like that?
I, Tony, I, I want to, not being coy when I say it, because they can and because they say um, they didn't want to go past their, their, their spending limits based on their fiscal guardrails that they, and I keep hearing the terms fiscal guardrails. It's um, I, I hate to be this person. I, I come from the gentleman's agreement. You promised us, you promised to municipality. This is what you're funding us, and now you're saying, sorry, we don't have it. We need to stay within our fiscal guardrails. We can't, we're not spending over X, whatever X is. And that's disingenuous, especially when you have communities, and it's not just us. Everyone across the state budgeted, you know, accordingly.
Right.
I mean, I had only like a four percent delta on it. I, I budgeted at seventy percent, hopefully anticipating that it'd be seventy-four percent. To get, to get ten percent less, it's, it's, it's one of the most disingenuous process, processes I've ever en, en, engaged in. For them to just wake up one day and say, guess what? We can't fund it at the level that we said we could.
Yeah, it's, it's just really unfortunate the state continues to just stick it to the kids and to the taxpayers of each of the towns in Connecticut, so it's just, it's, it's tiring.
I wanna wake up, I wanna wake up tomorrow and tell Bank of America, I can't pay my mortgage at the same rate. See what they say.
Yeah, you, you, we, we'd see your house for sale pretty quickly, Joe.
Exactly.
Appreciate you, thank you.
Joe, I think Joe Cassetti had earlier said, you, you can get your buddies together and you can just, you can build your own pool and whatever, but.
Yep.
Uh, disingenuous.
He was gonna speak, right? Correct? Yep.
Yeah, disingenuous is being generous with them, Joe.
Yes.
It's downright a backstab. Every year, they do this because they can do it. They do it because they want to do it. And I wanna know, where's the money going if it's not going to the kids? And you know what? If we didn't have a surplus in this state, and I mean, we've got a massive surplus, and why aren't they using it where it belongs? We need it, why can't we get it? They're doing it because they can do it.
Yeah.
Uh, for any other reason.
I, I absolutely agree with you.
I think we all agree that that's not a question for Joe, but for somebody else, Mr. Cassetti.
Absolutely, yes.
Yep.
Um, I just uh, wanted to, I remind Josh to um, to ask you, Joe, if he could get um, the kid to come back to do our.
The Pledge of Allegiance.
Yeah, so um, I didn't get notification of any specific person coming this week, so I, I just started it and we did the pledge of allegiance and then not realizing that he, there actually was a student here this, this month.
We smoked them.
And then he uh, we were gonna have him redo it, but he was gone. So if you wanna invite him back, we'll give him a proper uh, treatment.
Who's Ethan?
Ethan was his name. Um, please invite him back for next month and uh, send my apologies.
Well, yeah, offer an apology for us, too, Joe, thanks. Yeah.
That I will, that I will.
Josh got a little anxious here.
The other questions uh, for the superintendent from the alderman?
Thank you, Superintendent.
Absolutely.
Alright. Alright, thank you for visiting tonight. We appreciate it. Uh, so ends the public official session. We'll move on to uh, financial reports. First up, Finance Committee. Anybody?
Tony.
I, I didn't get a chance to review the document, so I'm, I'm gonna, I gotta take a pass on this one this month, guys.
Pasadena, huh?
Alright, fine.
Who's our backup?
Motion to pay all bills if deemed correct, that's.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Turned by Cassetti, second by not, all in favor? Any opposed? Any abstaining?
I'll abstain, it's Tony.
One, one abstention, uh, Mamon. Um, vote recommendations, the municipal report that was uh, sent out today to the uh, to the, to the board. After their January. Like Cassetti, second by Tar, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
I'll abstain to get, I need to get a chance to review. It's Tony.
One abstention, um, Mamon. Thirdly, um, the refund report, I have the amount here. Too many pages. Request for refunds in the amount of uh, eight thousand three hundred fifty-six dollars and three cents, if found to be correct. This was sent after the packet went out, but it was sent out to everyone.
Morgan.
Motion by Cassetti, is there a second on that?
Second.
Who was that?
Yes, Mario.
Second by Duranty, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Alright, motion carries unanimously. Um, motion, I'm seeking a motion to accept all the other monthly reports, annual reports uh, from all the other divisions and department heads and place those on file. Cassetti, and I think, was that uh, not the second? Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstaining? Carries. Uh, access and claims, we had one, number zero, one dash two five dash ten sixty-seven. Uh, Vineyard Sky Farms Corp. in Hill Street Solar versus City of Ansonia. What's your pleasure?
I'm gonna refer to council.
Second.
Motion to refer to council by Yaman, second by Tar, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Uh, we have a few communications this month. Um, I'll go through them in order, is, is in the packet, give you a quick up, up um, summary.
Yeah.
But communication one is D'Amico Associates, the engineer, regarding the East Main Street Lot UI easement. This uh, first communication contains the um, legal description for the UI eas, for UI easement along with a sketch depicting the location along East Main Street. What's your pleasure with this?
Motion to accept the easement.
We have a second on that?
Thank you.
Motion.
I want a discussion.
I, yep, motion to accept the easement by Cassetti, second by Rivers, and discussion, Mamon, hit it.
John, a quick question. So happened to see it, you know, in passing on social media that I guess the UI was offering payment for the easement for some of the residents. Does that? It, how does that work with the city? You know, if there's anything applicable there?
So the city was paid for the easement. The city was paid in excess of fifty, fifty thousand dollars for um, what they're doing in Nolan Field.
Okay. Alright, thank you, John.
And that was.
No further questions, Josh.
Some time ago, yeah, that was some, maybe some six months ago.
Okay, thank you.
We have a motion in a second, any other discussion on that?
I just wanna ask, but this, this, the easement that they're talking about in communication one isn't at Nolan Field. This is over on East Main Street, right? This is a private easement being negotiated with the landowners, or is this?
I think that's exactly what they're talking about now, is that they've entered into certain agreements with private landlord, uh, owners, where work um, needed to be completed on those private properties.
So is there anything that we need to do other than, I mean, obviously, you know, we're being notified of it and, and things like that. Do we don't need to accept the easement? Do we need to, is there any allowance that we need from this board?
Unless it was, unless city property was implicated, but I'm imagining if city property is implicated, they better be letting us know, because you know, they would not be allowed to do anything without a, without additional easements. Um, granted by the city, to them, they, they just can't do whatever they want on city property. But to my knowledge, none of these issues are, are involving the city property, other than, other than the property that was already accounted for.
Okay, because the, the sketch that's associated with communication one does seem to indicate it's budding, at least, property that was owned by the city, and that's why I just wanted a clarification. But, yeah.
City engineer is, city engineer is overseeing that. He's gonna make sure that uh, they follow the guidelines and it's done properly.
Well, it says, it says it's over property now, or formerly City of Ansonia property, as shown on the, on the sketch of, I don't know, five point something feet, so it's between us and Fitzpatrick's property, I guess. So probably abuts both of those properties.
Right, so is that something that instead of approving the easement as is, as is the motion that's on the table, is that something that should be referred to city staff to negotiate a price?
I would, I would refer it to staff to engineer.
Alright, I don't know if uh, if the original maker of the motion wants to amend to do that.
Yeah, well, uh, then I'll amend it to um, have the uh, staff engineer be involved in that.
We have a second on that?
I'll second that.
Alright, motion by Cassetti, second by Yaman, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you, Joe.
Abstentions?
No problem, Joe.
Motion carries. Thank you, guys. Uh, communication number two is from the tax assessor, David Grabash. Uh, he's recommending equality as the company to perform the twenty-twenty-six uh, statistical revow for the city. Requests a waiver of the bidding process for the following reasons. Uh, equality performed the twenty-twenty-two revow. They're the, they use software that seamlessly integrates with the system that Ansonia uses. And they're very responsive and timely to all the inquiries uh, thus far. So which, how would you like to proceed on this?
I'd be happy to.
I'll make a motion to. Oh, I'll second.
Alright, I'll second or whatever, whatever you wanna do, Tom.
I was gonna climb on, too.
Too late, Joe, get in line.
What was the motion?
I'll second to Josh.
Motion to approve the, the bid waiver request?
Yes, sir.
Yes, uh.
Second.
Mr. Grabash recommended.
And just a point of discussion, is that anybody that tapped through the twenty, the, the issues that came up after that revow in twenty-seventeen knows exactly what he's talking about, so this is a brainer.
Exactly. Um, so we have a motion in a second, all in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, uh, number three, um, this is the letter uh, mentioned in his update by Corporation Council. Um, the results of the toy show fundraiser, um, the communications uh, talks about the success of the first annual um, hopeful, maybe annual first Anton, Ansonia toy show. The total amount raised was two thousand four hundred and fifty dollars uh, for the acquisition of new children's books with the um, children and teens books at the library.
What do you need?
Josh, I'll make, I'll make the motion to accept if they need to, you know, move that into the revenue line or whatever, you know, the book coach needed.
It was accepting it, and I think John mentioned in his update to, it'll be moved over to the um, library board to, um.
I'll, I'll make that motion, Josh, and just uh, just a, a point of recognition for all involved, cause that's, that's, that, that goes to support a great cause. So everybody who helped in that or had a piece in that, thank you.
Second.
Alright, motion by Mamon, second by Cassetti, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? And Tony, that's where I got my first look at that amazing VHS collection in its glory was.
I, I take my motion back then, Josh, sorry.
I'm gonna let you guys know that our entire Schwarzenegger collection went within minutes, and that includes Conan, Conan the Destroyer, and also Red Sonja, but there's a lot of Chuck Norris movies.
I was gonna say, John, I, I wanted to know how many of the Chuck Norris ones remain? I think the answer was all of them.
All of them.
I don't think any of the Chuck Norris collection, including Invasion USA, went.
They're indestructible, though. You can't get rid of those. Even if you try, they just reappear.
We have duplicates, too.
There are multiple Chuck Norris films, I think so. So maybe if we wanna have a special Chuck Norris exclusive event.
No.
Tim, whatever is left, can you just drive over it with a bucket, please?
To benefit the Public Works Department.
Or donate the, donate them to the police for their shooting efforts.
Target practice, it's terrible, come on.
They'll miss everyone at Chuck Norris.
I forgot, did we vote on that? Yeah?
Yes.
Alright, uh, the last communication is, and you received this in the packet, uh, or receive this um, from the uh, the clerk's office, the bid for trash disposal service, you, you received the, the full bid um, specs and then a little summary. Um, do we have any discussion on this before we, we, we'll, we'll uh, talk about it later in the agenda, but um, this was basically on the bids, is, is uh, Brian, you wanna wanna speak on this? Is Kurt here?
Yeah, Josh, I'll do a summary when we get to that part, part of the agenda.
Okay, so for this, we don't need to do anything. This is just uh,
Yeah, for, for right now, you don't have to do anything. It's just um, making note that you received the information and then we'll discuss it at the agenda item later on.
Okay, perfect, thank you. So stay, stay tuned. Um, we have no resignations. And then we have a bunch of appointments. There were two sets of appointments, so I wanna be certain that we're using the right ones. The amended appointments that came out. I'll go over here. Um, from the mayor, pursuant to my powers under the city charter and code, I hereby submit the following appointments, January tenth letter. Um, Board of Building Appeals, uh, these are five-year terms and they're, uh, I like to do these in groups if possible, since there's a ton of them. Uh, does anyone have an objection to that? Doing them together?
No.
Alright, uh, so there's two nominees, uh, the Donald Eman, Democrat, Ford, Jason Wright Drive, and Christopher Sansone, Democrat, twenty-seven High Acres Road. Five-year terms, Board, Board of Building Appeals.
Second.
Motion to approve, Yaman was first, and who was the second around that?
Tar.
Tar. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, any opposed? Any abstained? Alright, congrats to them, thanks. Uh, Cultural Commission, we have a three-year term. Um, Stephanie uh, Musla, eighty-one Jackson Street.
We need to know what she is.
Uh, it's not listed.
I don't think you need a political affiliation with cultural, right, John?
Okay, no worries.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Yaman.
Thank you.
Second by Rivers, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Alright, motion carries. Congrats and thank you. Uh, School Building Commission, these are two-year terms. Um, there are thirteen um, nominee, and they're spelled out in terms of, um, it was supposed to be what, the mayor, three tax members, three Board of um, Education, three aldermen, and three residents. That's how you get the thirteen. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna read all these and we'll do them. Uh, I'm gonna block. First one, mayor, uh, David Cassetti. Um, Republican, three High Acres Road, myself, Joshua Schuer, one nineteen Prindle. Joseph Yaman, Republican, one eighty-three Waukele Ave. Uh, Joseph Genetti, Republican of two Gracie Lane. Gary Cassetti, Democrat, one oh two Rude Avenue. Rafine Gonzalez, Democrat, one Merritt Street. Uh, Michael DeLassio, Democrat, one sixty-eight Prospect Street. Rich Bishara, unaffiliated, twenty Sobin Drive. Sharon Varochak, Republican, five Sobin Drive. Tracy DeLibro, Republican, thirty-one Martin Terrace. Nancy Monaco, Democrat, nine Dempsey Court. Bobby Evans, Republican, two Glen Ridge Drive, and Amy, uh, messes up Bravo, Bru, Bru, Brujo. Bravo, Democrat, ten Clifford Drive.
Believe, uh, Mr. President, that's unaffiliated.
Which, last one?
Amy, yeah.
Unaffiliated, ten Clifford Drive. Sorry for butchering her name.
Motion to accept.
Motion to accept by Tar.
Back it.
Second by, who was? Second by, who was that not?
Lovinsky.
Lovinsky, alright, uh, all in favor? Any extensions?
I'll abstain on myself.
Likewise, Joe Genetti.
Genetti, I'm in. I usually abstain, but you know, I'm gonna roll with it, I'm gonna vote for myself. Alright, motion carries, congrats and thanks to all uh all those, they have some work ahead of them. Other projects. Uh, next up, Board of Ethics, five-year term, we have four nominees. Uh, Larry Bummels, Republican, uh, for Renahan Drive. Christopher Leacy, Democrat, thirteen Hull Street. Dorothy uh Sawonic, Republican, forty-four Roosevelt Drive and Catherine Sullivan, unaffiliated for Burley Drive.
Motion approved.
Motion to approve by Yaman.
I'll second that.
Second by Mamon, all in favor? Any opposed? Any abstained? Alright, motion carried. Uh, congrats and thanks to them as well. Um, see what else we got here, I'm gonna look at my agenda. We have.
Key to the city.
The city, uh, we have a key to the city being honor uh gi- given to Yusaf Arzlan. Who's the owner of Veteran Textile and the Borabora Laundromat. Um, he's a great supporter of our community. And also works extensively with veterans and was nominated uh for this award tonight by the mayor himself. Like to congratulate him and thank him. And uh, we will get him his person uh his key in person. Um, so thank you.
Hush.
Yeah, congratulations to them.
New year, we need to change the locks.
Alright. Um, resolution, we have one resolution, Olson Drive, three point five million dollar grant, I believe that number's wrong.
Right. Yep, it's three point eight million and I'm gonna read it into the record for you guys vote, if that's okay?
Thank you.
Whereas pursuant to CDS section four dash sixty-six C. The Connecticut Department of Economic and Community Development is authorized to extend financial assistance for economic development projects and whereas it is desirable and in the public interest that the city of Ansonia has made an application to the state for three point eight million dollars for assessment and remediation at Olson Drive. And to execute an assistance agreement. Now therefore be it resolved by the Ansonia Board of Aldermen. That it is cognizant of the conditions and prerequisites for the state financial assistance imposed by Connecticut General Statute, section four dash sixty-six C. That the filing of this application for state financial assistance by the city of Ansonia is in the amount not to exceed three point eight million dollars is hereby approved. And that Mayor Dave S. Cassetti, sorry, almost done, is directed to execute and file such applications and any other paperwork with the Connecticut Department of Economic and Community Development. Um, that may be required and is and is the authorized representative of the city of Ansonia.
Joe, so I'll make a motion to accept that and empower the mayor, as Sheila has read into record.
My second.
The motion by Mamon, second by Genetti.
I just have a question.
Yep.
Question by Tar.
Just to clarify again, nothing is coming out of the city or the taxpayers for anything to do with Olson Drive, I just want to put that on the record. No match for this.
No match.
It's all grant funds, um, and hopefully, you know, will be finished quickly. Well, thank you for getting the grant. You're right.
And heavily regulated Bobby to make sure that they're used for such a purpose.
Perfect.
Nothing else.
Alright, motion and a second, all in favor? Opposed? Any extensions? Alright, motion carries unanimously.
Sheila, get it done, Sheila.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, uh, actually, there's nothing listed under ordinance, but um Attorney Marini had mentioned um having to schedule either the public hearing and or the ordinance meeting or both. Uh, we tried this last month. Uh, it's probably just another one, never never happened, do you guys want to take a shot at this? Um.
Yeah, I mean, if if everybody's available on the twenty eighth, I don't know if that works for you, John, but I think that gives it that gives us enough time to not only um go through everything as a subcommittee, but I think enough time to get it uh publicly.
That works.
Yeah, if we can do a meeting for the subcommittee and then sort of follow that with a public hearing and then if there's any more work, we can continue it at the subcommittee level. But that gives us the ability to get the public input um before we go too far down the road.
That sounds good, why don't we why don't we plan on um January twenty eighth at seven PM via Zoom and um we can kind of go from there.
Perfect, seven PM, you said?
Yeah, I think that works best for everybody.
Or to
Perfect.
Look forward to receiving that agenda. Yeah.
Josh, can we also set a meeting for the facade for you, me and Tony to? Uh, revamp the program before it comes up again because.
Yeah, we can do that, not under this, but yeah, we can, we can have a meeting. Um, to discuss.
Yeah, under new business, old business, whatever, we need to set that up.
Okay, we'll put that under old business.
I don't know if Sheila has some dates from our engineer, but we also like to get the Opera House event on the schedule.
Okay.
I'm just thinking of holding that event at the senior center. As it may be convenient for both the multimedia presentation and also the public to have access to the center, you know, we have ability to offer some improvements there as well.
Yeah, I'll get a I'll get a response from Patrick Quinn as to when they're available, um, they offered to do it before, so.
Are there some dates that would work for the board? Are there some dates that would work though for the board, nights of the week that would work for the board?
Well, Tues- Tuesdays seem to always work, um, since we're conditioned to second Tuesday. O- opposite Tuesdays seem to work, um, I can't speak for everyone else, but. You want you want to do that now or do you want to throw some stuff around and and poll, I can poll, I can poll everybody and see what works?
If you can get a poll going after the meeting.
Yeah. Okay. And facade. Alright, um, so we'll come back on ordinance, uh, new business, we have one item, we it was mentioned earlier, this is the um, bids for trash services, is Kurt still here?
I am, Mr. President.
Alright.
So I'll refer everyone to the uh information that they received um earlier today uh from the town clerk's office. We received three bids, uh, a bid from Earth Loop Transport. A bid from Oak Ridge Waste and Recycling and a bid from North Atlantic Waste Recycling. Um, so we asked each of the companies to bid out um, what it would cost for curbside pickup, um, as well as disposal. Uh, just to give you all an idea of what we have budgeted. Um, just for your reference, for curbside refuse pickup, we currently have a million dollars budgeted. And for hallway refuse, we currently have nine hundred and fifty thousand. Uh, we also have five hundred and seventy-five thousand budgeted for recycling, so the total budget for this is two million seven hundred sixty-three thousand thirty-one dollars, that's for the current fiscal year that we're in. Um, so the the questions were very straightforward um to the three providers. So I'm gonna go through and give you the breakdowns of each. Um, and then we could talk a little bit more in depth on those, so we'll first start with Earth Loop Transport. Um, so they are, um, their proposal for years one, two and three was for eight hundred and fifteen thousand dollars a year for the curbside pickup. And then for the three years, uh, they quoted at a hundred and eight dollars per ton. Um, to kind of use a number to try to create um some understanding of total costs. Uh, we are using approximately five hundred and fifty tons per month. Um, that breaks down to seven hundred and twelve thousand eight hundred dollars. Um, on average, so that we are looking on average each year for Earth Loop Transport of one million five hundred twenty-seven thousand eight hundred dollars. A three-year period, four million five hundred eighty-three thousand four hundred dollars. Uh, the next would be North Atlantic Waste Recycling.
I'm sorry, Kurt, does that include recycling as well?
That does not include recycling, no.
Okay.
Um, North Atlantic Waste Recycling um gave a quote, they did theirs a little bit differently. Uh, because they gave us a total cost for pickup as well as uh for all of the tonnage. Um, for year one, one million four hundred forty thousand seven hundred sixty-eight dollars and thirty cents. Year two, one million four hundred eighty-one thousand one hundred eighty-five dollars and fifty-one cents. Year three, one million five hundred sixty-four thousand four hundred forty-four dollars and ninety-three cents. Total cost, four million four hundred eighty-six thousand three ninety-eight point seven eight, now there is no um amount per tonnage listed, um, this is the cost that we're going to pay regardless of the amount of tons that we put through. So if we only average five hundred tons a month, we're gonna pay the same price. If we average six hundred tons a month, we're gonna pay this price. Um, so that's a little bit different than the other two, and then the last one.
Hold on, before you move forward, wait, can I ask a question, so, sorry, Kurt.
No, that's okay, though.
May- maybe for Tim as well, y- you know, like five years on average for the tonnage, are we going up or are we going down?
I think it's more important that they capped it, I think what Kurt's trying to say is that uh.
Right, no, I get that, I get that, I I guess I'm just ensuring that, you know, we're we're, if it's an average of five fifty and somehow everybody either, you know, buys, you know, less things to to throw out and, you know, we end up at four hundred, you know, tons a month or something like that. You know, it doesn't go, doesn't go down, I don't think it's gonna go down, you know, if anything, I probably think the tonnage goes up from what I remembered from a couple of years back when we talked, but.
Yeah, it doesn't seem to be trending downward, Tony.
Okay.
Yeah, it in in previous years, we're using um about a hundred and ten um tons a week. So these numbers seem to be in line with that, um, as to Sheila's point, as things have been slowly increasing. Uh, obviously, the the transfer station's busier, so there's more tonnage coming in, uh, so I think this is a pretty solid estimate. Um, uh, maybe a little high in year one, but I think by year three, I think the number, I think the number's gonna be pretty solid.
Just want to make sure we don't, you know, our usage is not going, our tonnage is not going down. And, you know, we're stuck with a fixed cost, so if if it's going up, of course, you want to get stuck with a, you know, a a lower than average fixed cost, which is preferred, so.
Well, and and that's one of the things that makes this bid kind of attractive, um, if there is an escalation. Um, or ju- or just a normal increase in tonnage year over year. Uh, and and again, I I think they factor into this, um, you know, a forty-one thousand dollar increase in the first year and about eighty thousand dollar increase in the third year. So I think they're trying to take that into account, I think it does build in some some protection, uh, but I I just want to re- re- read the last one to you prior to.
Oh, sure, sure, yeah, thank you.
Into a discussion. Uh, the third one is Oak Ridge Waste and Recycling, who is our current uh recycling provider. Um, so for their uh curbside pickup, uh, year one, seven hundred forty-six thousand four hundred and four. Year two, eight hundred and twenty-one thousand forty-five dollars. Year three, eight hundred sixty-six thousand two hundred and two. For their tonnage, uh, in year one, uh, ninety-five dollars. Year two, ninety-nine dollars and twenty-eight cents. And year three, one hundred and four dollars and twenty-four cents. So if you add in the amounts um of those, they are in total one million three hundred seventy-three thousand four hundred and four, again, that's at a five hundred and fifty dollar, a five hundred fifty ton a month projection. Uh, year two, one million four hundred seventy-six thousand two hundred ninety-three. And year three, one million five hundred fifty-four thousand one hundred and eighty-six. Total, four million four hundred three thousand eight hundred eighty-three. So in order of uh bids lowest to highest. Um, again, based on five hundred and fifty tons a month, so we're comparing apples to apples. Um, Oak Ridge is comes in at the lowest at four hundred, or excuse me, at four million four hundred three thousand eight hundred eighty-three. North Atlantic Waste Recycling comes in second at fourth uh four million four hundred eighty-six thousand three hundred ninety-eight dollars and seventy-eight cents. And Earth Loop uh comes in third at four million five hundred eighty-three dollars, five hundred eighty-three thousand four hundred dollars. Now, I I'd like all of you to refer to the paperwork that was submitted um, by North Atlantic Waste Recycling, because while this was not asked. Um, this is something that North Atlantic put into their bid. And I think it should be noted uh to the Alderman as a part of your decision. Um, it is a letter dated December sixth, twenty twenty-four, and it was included um in the packets. Um, it is on page nine. It says, um, to whom it may concern, as you may have seen, Country Disposal has decided to rebrand our name, so on and so forth. Uh, North Atlantic Waste Recycling would like to offer as a part of our proposal providing ninety-six gallon toters for trash at no additional cost to the city of Ansonia. These toters will be household use only, one toter will be delivered to each residential home. Please note that multifamily homes will receive a toter for each household located at the home, so a two-family house would obviously receive uh, two toters. And again, while that was not asked as one of the specific bid questions, that was put in North Atlantic's um, proposal, and again, that obviously has a monetary value. Um, what that would be, I I would guess um would be in the three to four hundred thousand dollar range of value to the city.
Bonus.
Wow.
Yeah, that makes sense.
While there is um a a roughly eighty-three thousand dollar difference um in the projections between Oak Ridge and North Atlantic Waste, um, I think you do need to take into account the toters. Um, and and again, and as as uh Tim Holman mentioned, um.
And the cap tonnage.
These five hundred and fifty tons a month projection, um, if that number is higher um, then North Atlantic Waste Recycling looks substantially better. If that number is lower, then North Atlantic Waste Recycling looks substantially worse. But again, with them, at least you have one locked-in guaranteed number, there's no flexibility, substantially easier to budget for the next three years.
From a physical appearance.
Yeah, I'll turn it back over to you and take any questions, so.
If I just mentioned, just from a physical appearance, you know, the the recycled toters on recycle night, you know, are pretty uniform and they they actually look you know, nice when they're all uniform, whereas, you know, you have hundred and fifty-seven different types of trash receptacles, you know, folks are throwing their trash and some have lids, some don't, so. You know, garbage blows all over, I think the the totes alone are kind of a a gimme, but that's that's great, alright, Kurt, thanks for that, sorry, Josh.
Yep, no, Tim had a a question or comment?
Well, being at the transfer station for the years that I've been at, uh, the residents have been quest- requesting uh, trash cans for years and years and years. Now, if we look at this number, it's seven thousand five hundred units in this city that would we get free trash cans, so if we do the math on that, I think that North Atlantic by far is way above the number that we need to be at. Also, if we look at the trend over garbage over the years, garbage tends to go up. And it's going up and up and up, I don't see it going down. Um, it may go down, but if you look at the seven thousand five hundred units that will get trash cans and you you put that into the number, I think North Atlantic by far. We also have to take in consideration that North Atlantic, which is country, has been doing this garbage for seven years. So they know this city, they know these people, they know these ru- these routes, so. But I say that North Atlantic probably by far. I say that North Atlantic probably by far is the one that we should go with.
Hmm. Um, Josh, if I may, is, is, is John Marini still on?
Yep.
John, have you, have you looked at any of the like that tonnage cap? Is there, there's no fine print in there? There's no out for them or anything like that with, with that cap?
Yeah, so let me say that if we select, um, a bidder that's proposing a cap, then I would say that then in turn leads to the drafting of the contract that goes with the bid. And I would be sure to make sure the terms of the agreement are going to hold the bidder to what's proposed. And if they're not willing to go along with what's proposed, I would be back here at the Board of Aldermen. Um, so for example, if it's gonna be proposed that the, uh, the years that, you know, that, that the amount per, the amount's going to be capped as an overall, you know, irrespective of tonnage, they're going to have to have those provisions built into the agreement. And there's going to have to be something that it counts for what happens if that's not the case, right?
Mm-hmm.
And I don't think an, an agreement could be acceptable unless it makes accounts for those, for those situations.
Okay.
Because we're not going to allow a bid to be won on one proposal and then shift it into a totally different proposal, right? So there has to be a way to hold the bidder, um, accountable and to those proposals.
The RFP allows you to negotiate with the.
Yeah.
Your RFP is not a contract. So the RFP is part of the contract documents, but I would want to create a contract that in any event, and with any of these bidders, um, because it's better to go back to a contract than have to go back to disparate bid documents to form the basis of the contractual relationship.
What question?
Josh, I'll, I'll make, I'll make the motion, but I think you, there's other questions that folks had, but go ahead, Bobby.
Yeah, I just had a question. So they're gonna provide one bin per unit. So if it's a two-family house, it's two bins, whatever. What if, I mean, most single-family homes have two and three bins that they want to put out. Are they gonna take anything that's put out? Do they want their own? Are we gonna be able to purchase more? How's that gonna work?
They'll take their, they'll take whatever you put out, but they will provide you with a bin. And if you want to supplement with something else, or if you want to purchase another bin, they're, they're proposing to pay for a bin for every unit.
Cause we had the same thing with the recycling and that caused all kinds of craziness in the city, if everyone remembers, people complaining.
Yeah, and people put various different recycle, some recycling bins out for those that can't fit it, you know, especially all of our people that will have a lot of Amazon packages, Bobby, so those folks.
Okay, okay.
Um, you know, if they can't get all of those boxes into the recycle bin somehow, they manage.
Yeah, I mean, I know, I know other cities, they can only take certain ones because of the new trucks. They lift them right.
Yep.
On the sides. If that's what they're looking at for the future. I mean, I don't know where they're going, but I just want to make sure that any bins right now, or at least are capable of being picked up.
Hmm. Tim, do you know if their trucks are manned or if they use the arm?
Right now, they're manned. They may go to the arm in the future, but I think the most important thing is, I ride around and I see all the garbage cans all over the city. And what, what we, what we're facing right now is your average garbage can with no lid, the little small thing they buy, doesn't hold much. It blows everywhere. They're gonna come in and give you the ninety-six gallon or whatever it is. It's the heavy-duty garbage can that can hold more and be more efficient and not overflow. So I think that will make it more efficient for the city than having garbage cans blow everywhere.
So the arm works with those larger cans too as well. But understand, Tony, that they can't get those, the automated trucks through some of the city streets, because they're too narrow. So they could be used on some, in some areas and not in other areas.
Yeah, I was just curious if they were gonna mandate we had to use their cans or whatever, but.
Right.
I'll, I'll bake that into the motion somehow.
I got a question.
Yeah, go ahead, Joe.
Uh, how, how did they work the recycling?
That's what I was gonna ask.
Oak Ridge does the.
Oh, they'll keep on doing it?
Uh, until their contract.
Until their contract's up.
I see. Okay.
When is it up? Oak Ridge.
Uh, next year, I believe.
Tim, any chance we get a sweetheart deal with, uh, with North Atlantic if we somehow consider them for the recycling next year?
I think anything is possible. I mean, everybody wants to be part of any process and, and also the transportation. I think all that down the road is probably negotiable.
Hmm. All right. Appreciate your information. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions for, we have everyone on here. Kurt, Tim.
I think we had a motion on the floor, right, Tony?
You were starting, you were starting.
Getting there.
Go ahead.
All right. I, I'd like, Josh, I'd like to make a motion to accept the bid from North Atlantic. Obviously calling out the specifics of, you know, A, the tonnage cap, two, the totes, you know, that they've offered, um, you know, the, the units of the city, you know, we called out. I, I know Tim said seven thousand, five hundred. I don't know if that was mentioned in the document, but the one per unit in the city, you know, specifying that, John, if we can capture that in as well. Um, and to, you know, work up the, the contractor, whatever it is for North Atlantic.
Second.
A motion by Mamon, second by Duranty. Any further discussion on this? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you guys for all that information.
Thanks, Tim. Thanks, Kurt.
Um, all right, uh, as far as, uh, old business, Bobby, I, I said, I'll, I'll just reach out to you guys on the facade piece. We'll schedule something. Um, and I'll reach out on the, the Opera House. Uh, I'll pull for a, a date for that as well. We can schedule that down the road. Um, any other old business?
I got a, I got a question for, I'm gonna bother John tonight, so, sorry, John. Um, do we have an update? What, what's happening next or what are the next steps for the um, vacant commercial space? Change, ordinance change, I think that we had talked about. What happens next with that?
Oh, that would be our ordinance meeting that we're looking at for the twenty-eighth.
Oh, okay. Okay, got it. Got it. Perfect. Yep, thank you. Caught that. Just missed the connection.
Appreciate it. Come on, Chicago, let's go.
All right.
Motion to move to executive session.
Second.
Motion by Rivers, second by Mamon to move to executive session. We have three items. Uh, who would you like in executive session, John?
I have Kurt and Sheila, myself.
Good.
Hold on, we gotta wake up Trish.
Trish, wake up.
I'm here.
Hi, Trish.
Welcome back.
Let's go, Rivers.
Motion to return to regular, uh, session.
Dave Cassetti, how you've changed.
Motion by Rivers. Was there a second on that?
Yes, no.
Second by not. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. In executive session, we had three items. I'll take them in order. Um, number one, requesting reduction on Blight Lane, RE thirty-two Spring Street. What's your pleasure?
Motion to take no action.
Second.
To take no action by Yaman, second by Mamon. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? All right, motion carries. Uh, number two, union contract negotiations. This was for Nature Center, uh, up sue in City Hall Clerical up sue.
Motion to approve and ratify the contract as amended for both.
Second.
Uh, motion by Yaman, second by Rivers. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, and the final item, Benchmark Municipal Tax Service, uh, versus Ansonia.
Motion to proceed is discussed in executive session.
Second.
Motion to proceed is discussed in executive session, second by who is that Mamon?
Rivers.
Rivers.
Or Rivers.
Rivers, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
For abstaining. All right, motion carries unanimously. Um. Well, I'll leave it to you guys. Uh, which you want to do next? Anyone? Rivers?
Well, she's to which, uh.
I'll second it.
You're not gonna make a river. Thank you, everyone.
Rivers.
Good night, everybody.
Good night, everybody.
Oh, good night.
Night.
Good night. Good night.
It's an angry.
So I am seeing.
Oh, my goodness.